My Father in Heaven, we bow our heads before him as Councilor Donald Hartston, recognizing the council from the Westwind School Division and recognizing the people in our gallery. Thank you for the positions we hold of trust. Thank you for the positions of leadership and guidance and direction that we receive from you. We ask to continue, especially tonight, as we've discussed matters concerning our community and this surrounding area. Please lead and guide and direct us with the citizens' hearts in mind. We sing for you, and we pray for you, in the name of our sacred Son Jesus Christ.
Well, we're going to call this council meeting to order this 23rd day of February 2021, and we want to recognize all those who are in the gallery today. Thank you so much. We have our delegation from the Westwind School Division. And it's good to see you. We don't see you often, but thank you for coming. We have an agenda that we need to adopt, Councillor Barnes.
I just want to add one, a little bit of discussion on the survey questions.
Okay, Councillor, since the survey is on 7/8, can you maybe have that at that point? Thank you.
I move to adopt the dividend.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Well, we have the Westwind Division, and in order to be able to do that, we will go into sessions. So, Corey, welcome, and we need to kind of excuse you for a few minutes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn for a minute, so council meeting could be very nice.
Okay. Any comments? All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, so I would imagine that Jill, are you the one presenting the summary of the assessment?
I can, yes.
Okay, thank you so much for being patient with us. We anxiously are waiting to hear the good news or the sad news, or whatever.
News.
So Morgan sent me the new assessments for this year. And in comparison to last year, there's really not a ton of change. So there's two numbers you can look at. The overall assessment, we're actually down just over $500,000 in assessment, but that is including exempt as well as taxable property. For the taxable property, we are down $949,000 in taxable property, which ends up being about 0.29% down from last year. So we have had some new properties, but not very many, so not very much new assessment. We also are dealing with some of the changes to COVID related to COVID for some businesses that were really impacted. There is an assessment decrease for some of those couple of properties totaling about $500,000 in assessment for just between the two. So that will go away next year if COVID depends on what happens this year for COVID. But that's kind of where we're sitting at this point. We're down 0.29% in assessment.
Okay, so tell me again, $949,000?
Yes, on our taxable assessment at this point. We do not have the linear tax assessments in as yet. Once we have that, that will adjust that amount as well because we have taxable, those are taxable as well.
Just one thing in line here, if I might, correct me if I'm wrong, the bulk of our linear is ours. It's the distribution system.
Atco and the town.
Yeah, so it's not everything else, anything.
What are we like in unpaid taxes?
About how we normally are at, I think it's just over $100,000. But that's very typical for this time of year.
Jill, can you give us, Morgan used to give us when he did his presentation, a breakdown by categories of residential to give us a sense where the up is, where the low is, what remained unchanged?
I do have some of that numbering. So for your code 13, which is all of your residential properties, it's down 0.45%. You're looking at, on your commercial, about a 1.2% increase on some commercials. Some industrial, you have, you're down a little bit. Your machinery and equipment went up 6.4%, but there's very few properties of that. There's five, and they don't pay the school tax on those. So it's very, very small changes on some of those.
But in a type of residential, he used to be able to tell us if you were in a type of bracket, yeah, the classes, sub-classes.
He did not break that out for me at this point, no. But everything that I've seen in some of the comparisons I've done on specific properties I'm aware of, it's very minimal changes, if anything.
So we don't know which property went up, which property went down in assessment?
Not specifically.
We don't look at individual properties, Mary. We'd have to go through all 1,400 properties.
No, no, he didn't go through them. He used to go to class, for example, he used to say, if you did a, you know, in a past $400,000 assessment, he used to be able to say, well, that's up or that's down. So we had a better sense of which type of taxpayer were more impacted. And I'm willing to tell.
4 or 5 decrease, I'm thinking it's very minimal across the board.
Right, because 0.5, 4.5, 0.45 is an average. Well, it's better news than was ready.
We talked about businesses that are affected by COVID. Are we giving them a deal with the assessment?
So, specific to like your hotels that may not have had as much, their assessment, a lot of it is based on their usage and things like that. And so for like your South Country and your Outpost Hotel, they had no usage or very minimal usage. Those saw a decrease. You see something like Extra Foods, they saw no decrease. They saw a lot more usage, so there wouldn't have been a COVID reduction, really a reduction for them.
Councillor, if I might, there are certain properties that have a different methodology for assessment. There's not many. By and large, it's just historic sales. But there are, and I mean a few by, just a few in towns, do have a different methodology based on revenue.
Maybe more on occupancy for hotel and things like that, Councillor.
Maybe a silly question, but you talked about COVID related, and they won't be paying as much tax because they won't make, it's up your tally.
Yeah, so their assessment in, like Jeff was saying, for that method methodology, that was decreasing, didn't it?
Which means the town will be losing out there.
Yes, that will.
But this fund that we had, that founder offers, founders, what are these people that came in the, like the skating club, we gave them money off of this. Will that work for us? Will we get funding off of that because we're losing taxes on these?
We can use it against any of the outstanding taxes as of March 31st. We can count that completely. So that can minimize the effect that this future tax will have. Because we normally account for any outstanding tax anyway. That's never really been an excessive burden for us because we already account for it. So because we can put some of that money toward that.
Okay, what I'm saying is that if, let's take South Country, they've normally paid whatever they pay taxes, and now they're paying this, can that fund make a difference?
I don't think it can based on assessment, can it?
Not specifically to them, no.
No, but for us, can we claim the revenue, tax revenue loss?
Just in that original 70 that we were looking at, whatever we are outstanding as of March. So it's one hand, but it can go towards the other. You can't count it specifically for that. It's after the March 31st deadline as well.
So we could get some of that now.
In the budget, we have, was it $70,000, with the most funding balanced the budget?
And that more than covers that decrease.
So that covers the decrease in assessment?
More than covers that, yes.
Okay, so we're good at that point? Okay, well, that's not a bad news then. Thank you, Jill. Questions for Jill? Mr. Mandy?
Jill, tell me again, the taxable assessment is down 949?
949, yeah.
The taxable assessment?
The taxable assessment, yeah.
That is too.
And so if we have another year of what's happening now, we're looking at almost $2 million more.
Not necessarily. Depending on how badly the, and it was really only basically two properties that saw the biggest decrease for the COVID related. You'll see similar for them, potentially if they don't get any more. But the other properties, and with home selling, we may see some kind of an increase. It's really hard to tell, to say that, oh, it's going to be $2 million next year. That's hard to say that that's a given number.
But Jill, just from an observation point of view, and I don't know if that's correct, and Councillor Barnes, you might be able to help me there. There has been quite a bit of movement in the real estate this past summer, I would say. But if we residentially down 0.45% in assessment, that almost gives me a feeling that many of those houses were sold below the asking price.
You're correct. There were a lot of, there were some as much as 15%, less than the asking price. It was a surprise to me how it hit. Because usually, there's kind of a national average between the listing price and the market price. Sometimes 5%, 6%, that's kind of an average across Canada. But when you look at Calgary, it was down 17%. Hartson was all of that, as far as the market price, you know. It was very much down, and it was a very busy market last year. Busiest market for me since 2007.
Yeah, and that has been across Canada that way. So let's explain why we're down 0.45% in our assessment. Interesting. Thanks.
Jill, maybe you can jointly answer this with counsel lines. With the sales being up where they are, is it people moving into our community, or are they trading, exchanging homes, upgrading their homes?
Oh, it's mostly move-ins, a lot of move-ins, people I've never met before. I've had people, three clients from Vancouver area, up around Edmonton, I had some from there. I even had some from Saskatchewan. And then there was some first-time buyers from town, but it was more out of town. And I don't know, I can't speak for the other Realtors because that's not information that I get shared with. But I know that there's a lot of new people here in town.
Yeah, I can confirm that with the titles that come through. But I see there are a lot of names I don't recognize that are new, move-ins. A lot of hands changing through the town. One other thing to keep in mind with assessments, they are also based on what the market is as of July 1st of the previous year. So if there was a slump as far as house prices going down before that July 1st, if things picked up afterwards, we'll see that the following year.
Yeah, but still, we're under market values, so it might not help as very well.
On a much smaller basis, houses under construction right now are not assessed, is that correct?
It's assessed as what their completion is as of December 31st.
So most market completed facility.
So if there's 70% done, you get a tax assessment 70%.
Yes, it's a pro-rated rate.
Makes sense.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Much appreciated. So that will be what OML rate will be based on. So in front of us, we have a non-residential property incentive bylaw. Maybe Jeff, you want to give us a little bit more insight? We know we were kind of still debating on when the percentage would apply for the benefits to the builder.
Yeah, we're debating it too in the office. Following the Brownlee session, it caused us to have some debate in the office about some of the items within the draft bylaw. I'm glad we had some of that stuff from Brownlee to give us a little bit more context as we approach this bylaw for our tax incentive. One of the big things we're trying to get our heads around is when we first drafted this, it says the tax exemption will begin in the taxation year following the completion of the development, unless otherwise agreed upon. One thing you heard with Brownlee was that they recommended that the tax incentive begin immediately because if it's a five-year incentive, they said, and maybe they take three or four years to get completed, well, the clock never started ticking. And I get it. I get it from a policy point of view. But at the same time, we were having a good debate this afternoon in the office about even the administrative application of it. So for example, because I want to make this as confusing as possible now, see if we can work out it. Let's say business ABC comes into town and wants to build a $1 million building, and they apply for this, and they are accepted because they qualify. And so let's say it's September 1st, this September 1st, they're approved. So we could take the one tax that the incentive starts now, and it begins. Well, by December 31st of that year, they might be 5% completed, maybe. You know, they're doing their due diligence, they're trying to get a lot of their permitting done, they're trying to get a lot of that stuff going up, getting their financing order. And so at the end of the year, when we assess them, they've got a project worth $50,000. And so we give them 100% tax rebate on $50,000. Well, that's not really doing a lot for them, and it's certainly not giving them any kind of financial motivation, really. And so year two, maybe they're 25 or 30% down. So we're giving them 80% on $300,000. The carrot they were looking for was 100% on a million. That's what they were going for. Now, I'm torn on this because I think if the tax incentive makes or breaks your business case, don't do the business. That's a bad idea, that if you must have 100% of your tax waiver to make this thing work, probably not a good business case. So there's a part of me that's unsympathetic towards that, in a way, right? So I am conflicted, and I want to have some feedback from you on this timing of it. So from us, from an administrative point of view, we were discussing, okay, how would we apply this in the office? Because are we saying, okay, at the end of year one, you're only worth $50,000? So great, there's your $500 tax deferral, or tax refund, great. Then in year two, you're at $350,000. Are we giving you 80% of the difference between where you were the year before or the original amount? And I don't know, we're just looking at, in many ways, it's easier for us administratively if the tax break starts upon substantial completion because we have a benchmark amount to begin with, which is going to be just the value of land, is all it is. And then it's complete, so we know what the end value is, the end assessment. There isn't this staggered increase as it goes. So administratively, it's easier for us to administer.
Okay, so in what you have right now, on the 13, it says the tax exemption will begin in a taxation year following the completion of the development. So that's what you're talking about right now? Okay, so let's go back to Brownlee, because I remember listening to that and be quite intrigued by what they presented. What they presented was the 100% was upfront, and it was up to the builder to take advantage of it. But he loses, the builder loses his chances to have the full amount of that 100% every time one year laps and he hasn't built anything. So if his building in year five, well, that's five years, he could have had zero taxes, but now he has to pay taxes because they were saying, try to make it a limited amount, they were saying 15 years. So that's what they were saying.
The act only allows you to give any tax deferral or exemption for up to 15 years. That's the maximum, which I would not actually recommend we go down that road at all. That's a long time.
So that's what they were looking at, and I think when they were presented that, they were probably presented hundreds of millions of dollars of investment rather than a small brick-and-mortar that we might have around a small town. So I appreciate that schedule, and I think I'm okay with 13, that point 13, in this bylaw. But I would like to know what others feel around the table.
If I could throw something else out while you're pondering that. There is this risk that someone gets the approval. We want them to develop sooner than later, right? That's the goal, right? We want to add assessment sooner. So is the approval time bound? So for example, yes, you're approved, but if you don't commence construction within X time, you have to reapply. I don't know. I don't know that would work, but.
I think that was the idea of Brownlee, about losing your tax incentive if you don't have a shovel in the ground the first year, you lose it. If it's not the second, you lose it. So maybe that is something that we should consider inside there in order to optimize our chance to see that building being built. But normally, they have two years, don't they?
Well, and again, if they buy a lot from a third party, they don't have those kinds of restrictions. The 12/24 is when they buy land from the town, and it's intended to avoid speculation purchasing from municipality. But if I go buy a lot, if I go buy a business downtown and I want to do a massive renovation, but I'm not bound by any kind of timeframe, would that?
Okay. So how is council feeling about that notion about having this kick in once the completion is done?
Why do we not offer any incentive at all? We've come this far and we want to see what you think about this.
Councillor?
I look at the size of our community and the type of investment that comes here into our community as opposed to a larger center where you're talking big money. You're talking a very, very substantial investment. Rarely, you're going to see that type of investment here in town. So it's hard for me to give a tax incentive on just a little tiny bit of startup when, especially if these guys come in with a, whoever it is, comes in for a permit in September, they haven't even started hardly digging the hole until April. So they've got eight months of nothing, you know. And really, it's nothing to the town, that little bit. I prefer what Mr. Shaw is saying, that it should be more substantial on the end price.
At the completion, which is in what's in here in the section.
That's my feeling anyways.
Councillor Self?
Okay, yeah, I agree with the conversation with Jeff's proposal, simply because we are not losing. You know, we're gradually getting work, but it's helpful to the business. And eventually, we get our, we finally get our dollars at the end of our year. I think Jeff's on the right track.
There's another aspect here too. Small communities like ours, okay? We've got a piece of industrial property that's maybe sold for, what, $85,000?
$40,000 an acre.
Okay, $40,000 acre. Well, that $40,000 an acre, let's just, it's going to cost them half a million dollars, right? So there's a little more reason for an incentive on something like that. And a lot of those projects will take in two and three acre pieces. I mean, I looked it over on, by Canadian Tire on the south side. They've got a three-acre parcel there. It's just absolutely out of reach for anybody from here to even consider something like that. You can buy a three-acre parcel here for, like I said, $100,000, but that's going to cost them a couple of million dollars for that same piece there. So we've got to look at that with the panels.
Okay, sounds good. Councillor Self?
If we're comfortable with this unprepared, unsecond reading of the draft bylaw, 1695.
Can I throw something out before you do the resolution? This is part of the questions. So one of the other things we're curious about too is, we have an application, and what the policy, the bylaw says is, if you have an addition, expansion, renovation, the total property increases 25% in assessment, and that portion is, if it's a renovation, it's new construction and the whole property value. The question is, do you qualify simply by applying? Or do we want some kind of, like, I guess the question is, it's very objective to say, are you increasing the assessment of your building by renovation by greater than 25%? You are approved. That's it. That's the criteria. Or you're building a new building, obviously, that is increasing the assessment of what was there. By more than 25%, you're approved. Brownlee talked about this a little bit, that if administration simply approves or disapproves, and we've got really no criteria to disapprove, then always, there can be an appeal to council, of course. We do that with almost everything. That's why John was just here talking to you. But the question is, is simply meeting that 25% threshold make you approved?
Okay, why else would you have, would you suggest to make it better?
Well, I'm not suggesting it's efficient. I'm just saying that.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah, that is that, are you comfortable that if someone comes in and talks to Nolan, getting a development permit, oh, you're buying this old lot, oh, yeah, the assessment on that is $120,000 right now, you're proposing a new improvement that'll be $420,000, great, you're approved. Done.
Okay, so, okay, I understand what you're trying to say. You say, what is our recourse to know that that is exactly what will happen?
Well, the policy should give you some assurance. The question is, are there any subjective criteria that we want to look at? So I will give an example that the county is doing right now. So they made a provision for a specific industry. So you have to be value-added agriculture to qualify for the incentive. That's their bylaw. Or you must be, was it renewable energy, I think? Renewable energy also qualifies. So they put in some other criteria about, oh, what's the kind of business you're in, and we want to know a little bit about where you're doing it. Or we can keep it very mathematical. It's, here's the assessment, here's your permit value, yep, it qualifies.
Okay, so what the county is doing is to bring to their doors some specific business that they feel will be valuable to them in time in their community for tax purposes, because they're building clusters, little by little. So for us, how do we know where that we fit in with that idea?
I'm not suggesting you should, it's just, they talked about this notion of administration disapproving?
For example, maybe Councillor Self, you can help me with this one. You always talk about the importance of ECDF and trying to grow the ECDF in our town. So, and you always kind of partner that idea with tourism. So that is a little bit what the county has done. They've figured out one niche and targeting that niche. Is our niche the tourism industry?
Can I just answer?
Sure, go ahead.
I'll just give you my thought, Mayor, and that's, honestly, I don't know that I have ever thought in specific terms. I recognize that tourism is probably the most appropriate direction, but I don't know that we want to limit it to anything simply because we're not in that position at the town. We would be happy, I mean, I'm speaking out of turn, we'd probably be happy with any and all business that comes to town. Am I wrong, Mayor?
Well, that's my personal opinion. I just was trying to see, is there a niche that we should target? If not, let's leave it the way it is.
I look at multiple businesses of the same nature. There's a lot of competition out there for different businesses. When you have multiple businesses competing for the same thing, and then you talk to owners of those businesses who are being competed against, and they say, well, I guess we're shutting down, we can't compete anymore. And so, you know, you give an incentive for the new guy in the block that's got the same business, and then you've got one or two that are in that business, had been for a while, and they're looking and saying, you know, it's hopeless for us, I mean, we're, you know, that's competition, right? There's always going to be competition. And, and I'm not saying you ever want to eliminate that competition. But I'm just saying that that will eliminate somebody along the way because you can't, you, you can't have that many of the same business. Like, if, if you've had four or five hardware stores, it's obvious that somebody's going to go to business, right? So if another one comes in, a big box business comes in, they're going to wipe them out, all the other smaller ones. So, but do you give that incentive to that new guy coming in? I'm just saying, it doesn't hardly seem fair.
Well, no, that's a good point, Counselor Self.
So we have to get a little more specific. And I understand where the county's coming from. But what is it that we in our town can make it specific to? Is it something that's going to really help the tourism economic driver here in town?
Uh-huh.
I'd like to see that, but it's not happening so far.
Counselor Self?
And COVID hasn't helped?
I, I think, and I, I don't know. With respect to the county, I can kind of understand where they're coming from because, you know, the big market push in southern Alberta is Canada's premier food corridor. It runs from Lethbridge to Medicinead. And I think the county's thinking, hey, we want to jump on that bandwidth because we get free advertising. I don't know that we're in that position, you know? It would be great to target tourism. I don't know how we work this into this, but again, I don't think we can say, I don't think we can refuse any business at most of them. I think we're just happy to have anything come to town.
See, the only thing that is maybe the same in grace here is that in that article thirteen, uh, there is definitely the need to have the business completion done before that schedule of tax reduction kicks in. So it has to be completed. So it has to be somebody who is already willing to take a heck of a risk. And hopefully they have done a business plan and understand the competition.
So if I understand what Counselor Barnes is saying, you think that payrolls could be a little on even because somebody's getting a tax break?
I'm sorry, I can't understand what you're saying.
You think somebody's getting an unfair, unlevel payment because they're getting a tax break? So a new business that comes in is going to get a tax break, the old business sitting there is going to get bumped out? Is that what you were?
Well, I'm just saying that it, it's hard when you have existing businesses in town that have been here paying taxes for a long time. And then a new guy comes on the block, wants to do the same thing, and he sees an opportunity to get a tax break where the other guys aren't getting it.
What are we talking about?
That's what I'm saying.
Well, the reason we're giving them a tax break is we want them here to pay taxes. We can't predict if the other guys are going to go down the road or not.
Yeah. So all I'm thinking is that the guys that are leaving, now we're not getting their taxes and we're getting a deferred tax from the other guy.
Hey, we can't, we can't predict that.
You can't predict that. No, I know. I'm, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there. You know, I, I remember this community was vibrant. I don't know how many car dealerships we used to have in town. Five at one time. We had three implement dealerships here in town. We don't have an implement dealership in town. We got one car dealership.
Yeah, but, uh, Counselor, you have to realize that the, uh, the land has been divided, and the land have been bought together. Now we're not talking two hundred acres of land anymore. Now we're talking thousands of acres of land.
Yeah.
So those are so many farmers that left town.
Yeah, it's tough.
Right? So that's what created the last need for, for all that stuff.
Yeah.
Counselor Self?
So two, I guess two points to that. One is, uh, this tax incentive isn't in perpetuity. It's for five years.
That's right.
When your guy comes to town, he gets a tax break for five years, then he's on the same playing field as any existing business. But he might be paying more because he has a new building or whatever. Two, I appreciate what Counselor Barnes is saying with the vibrancy of the town, but you also can't dictate what the large corporations are doing because, for instance, General Motors made it very clear, they wanted everyone dealing in a larger center. So it's like, yeah, see it.
Yeah, they, they arbitrarily shut down.
It's the same with the farm implement dealerships. When you have, as the mayor said, large farm corporations, they're going to deal with Western Tractor or somebody that's based in a larger center.
Exactly. Yeah. So this is why the, I mean, the makeup of town changed because the land use changes. Okay, so we have potentially a, uh, motion on the table to go for second reading. So all in favor? All right. So I don't think that any other changes need to be done.
But we're going to maybe massage a couple of paragraphs just to clarify very clearly on those items, and then we'll bring it back for the reading.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Let's do one a little bit.
Okay. So draft by law sixteen ninety-seven, the famous intermunicipal development plan. Uh, I have tons of little tab, but I will not even start to address them. Uh, I will give that to administration to review. There are some things that, in my opinion, need reviewing. But there are more of, uh, amending words or fixing, fixing a few things or fixing the tri-words. But there is one thing that I want to note. On page eight, Jeff, help me, uh, see if I'm right or wrong. The flood hazard mapping is referred to as a nineteen ninety-two. It seemed to me we have a brand new one that has been completed actually this year.
That would be true. Yeah.
So that needs to be fixed. Just a detail, but I think we better fix it.
Oh, uh, it's very blunt of that, Mayor. It does say updated flood mapping for the Lee Creek Basin is expected in support of the same. So the consultation period for that isn't closed, and so they, they don't have the completed document at their access at this point.
Oh, but is it possible to, to, to have some kind of notion of, I mean, what's a two thousand ten document that we got then?
Two thousand ten?
Two thousand, uh, yeah.
Could you, you received the preliminary creek mapping, and then they opened it up for a public consultation period? And then they take that back with any feedback they got, and they look at all that. So the, I think it's closed now. I think the consultation period may just have closed. It is not a final document yet. It's close. It is very close, but it isn't final.
All right. I kind of frustrate me to have nineteen ninety-two because we know that, uh, since then, much has happened and has created a lot of problems. So, uh, there was something interesting in one of the paragraph, I'm going to find it somewhere, that has something to do with smell. And I found that, well, I'm turning the page and I'm going to find it. Here, it's page twenty-six, five point one point five. So it's kind of interesting, and it doesn't solve our problem. It says, "A town of Cottstown acknowledges Cottstown County's strategic direction to protect the agricultural land base and support and encourage agricultural industry, and recognizes that residents within the town may be affected by noise, smells, or other residual impacts associated with agricultural operation from time to time from operations that exist within a plan area." Well, that's the only reference there is about smell. In other words, tap it out. So I don't know how we feel about it, but that's what we actually agree upon.
I guess one of our arguments could be that from time to time, not constantly. So I don't know how much this is going to affect me. So if it's going to be every week, what do you mean by time to time? Twice a year? Fifteen times a year? That's a big amount of bylaw here.
When we're a Southeastland.
Exactly. Do you have any version of it?
So I don't know. We can tap that.
But I wanted to refer that to that.
I a hundred percent agree. We haven't agreed to this, you know?
Saying, we did not know what was going to happen. We have no idea.
So that's a point that we may want to say, listen, we got our rework of that. But we don't agree.
So Jeff, I don't know. Maybe, maybe we need to kind of see exactly what that smell mean, and maybe like Counselor Paul say, what does from time to time mean? Maybe we need to understand from that industry, what time to time mean in comparison of this. Um, and then, and there is, yes?
Mayor, can we move on there? Talk about smell. Give me a moment.
Go ahead.
I know in some of the cities, they try and get some of the, um, companies there that do admit orders to get kind of a, what do they call them? A scrubber on their exhaust.
Exhaust ventilation, yeah.
You know? But the problem is, is we're not in the county. County has their bylaws, and it's kind of an after the fact. If it was in town, we could do some controlling. But they're in the county, and they're, I don't know if their bylaws have anything in there that would inhibit the smelling by telling them they have to have a scrubber on their exhaust.
Okay, so that is something that we, uh, asked administration to find out.
Maybe we should, yeah.
Okay, but we did. But what there is also that's, uh, on page twenty-eight, five point two point six. It says, "If disputes or complaints in either municipality should arise between citizens and agricultural operators, the municipalities receiving the complaint will attempt to direct the affected party to the appropriate agency, government department, or municipality for consultation or resolution wherever possible." I wouldn't have a clue where to refer anyone who complains about a smell when it's there. No idea.
Well, the, the other word, will attempt. What does that mean?
Well, will attempt. That's exactly what it means. It says, there's no definite. But Jeff, may, maybe we need to figure out which agency, uh, can we refer people to if they're really bothered by the smell? Because I have no idea.
I would think in marketing, it's going to be who you vote to.
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
So is that something I would like to know?
Mayor, I'm just, just reading on that. One of the things that, um, is, I think, intended to help with this is that it establishes the role of an interface zone. And we called it, that's the name it was landed on eventually.
Yes, yes.
And there's to be a heightened amount of consultation in the planning and in the development of that zone. So we will always be notified of any subdivision within the rural or the interface.
Yeah.
Is that, we were notified of that development, for example, too, and then just some things weren't considered at the time. So it's trying to give a little bit of safeguard in that interface. Um, but yes, we can, we can look at something more robust as well on that. I know prior to this commercial development, it was really trying to deal with, for example, the, the confined feeding operation in the west.
Yes.
And we have some big confined feeding operation setback zones in this now too, which wouldn't allow that in the proximity of the town. But, um, I think maybe it could be, we could discuss more on that rural urban interface, what that discussion looks like for industry.
Okay. So that is something. I don't know if there is anything else that you have. There is something interesting on five point five point four on page thirty-one. It's about water rate. I know. But remember that we have an MOU with the county, so it does not exactly apply exactly the same way as it is written. Okay?
Does that support the number?
Please go ahead.
Yeah, I think all of these points are extremely valid. So I don't know that we're prepared. I think on the agenda, they say we get first reading. I'm not sure that, so sure that we're prepared to either.
I think, I think we, we really need to discuss that a little bit more. I mean, if you pass first reading, it does not seal the deal. Okay? Passing first reading does not mean that you cannot make changes or, or, uh, try to understand.
I agree, but why would we even pass first reading when you have concerns right up front?
It's up to you.
I, I just, I don't know.
Jeff, was that the intent to have first reading for this?
So again, I, I don't have a problem either way. The intent was that if we pass first reading, we can start to schedule public consultation on it.
Right.
Um, the county did pass first reading yesterday. But it doesn't compel you to do anything. But it's also true that if you do first reading, and then you don't have to pass any further readings until you're, or you can fail second reading. Right? That's the other option. So, so you still hold, you, you are not compelled to proceed with this at any kind of timeframe you're upcoming.
I mean, on the, on the call, on the call, I think it's a fairly decent document. There's a few things that I have, I have to write down. But I think on the call, it's okay, but there's some sticking points that might need a little bit more work. So up to you.
But on the other hand, the council document, by the way, usually neither of these types of deals, but they give a call. Exactly. We have a need for it. If we stop, we told you to do a first reading today. We do have more information, we have more data. And we're not going off there in a hurry much at all. They like what they're reading, and they say, here, do the first reading.
Well, you can have a look for the reading with any of the discussion, huh?
Counselor, I was just saying, to get the process going, I could accept first reading with the understanding that there may be other issues that we need to deal with for second reading.
Would that be okay?
Fine with me, yeah, yeah.
Would you be okay with that? Okay, all right.
I'll make that motion, but we have first reading of this bylaw.
With further?
By law fifteen ninety-five, intermunicipal.
Ninety-seven, no.
The whole development, I mean, my lines on, here we go. Make a motion that we, uh, hold on by law fifteen ninety-seven, we just call it development plan thirty.
Would you want to put a with?
We can do that.
With review of some?
We understand that we will do further review on this.
With, with further review on, uh, specific points?
Yes.
All right. All in favor? Thank you. Okay.
Just going to take a little recess, Mayor? We have a focus here.
Somebody give me a, uh, something. Thank you. All in favor? Thanks.
Thanks, Lord, for digesting.
Thank you, Sean, for, for doing that.
Thanks, Jim. Enjoy.
All right. So let's go to sixty, the proposed emergency management by law and council and county regional emergency management plan. Jeff, do you want to talk to that?
I know this is a tough read. I may still deny that.
There still is some...
We got rid of the acronyms. But in short, here's what's being proposed. That as a region, meaning the town, the county, the graph, and the office, we would have a plan. There's a regional emergency management plan. We would form an agency regionally that would consist of council, each municipality. And there's also another board, um, which would be administrative in nature, so the CAOs, the committee. And the intent here is, is that each of us as CAOs would remain directors of emergency management in our community. We would have a regional director of emergency management. It is intended that this would be a part-time position that we would all contribute, hopefully just quite a nominal amount to every year. This person is responsible to ensure that all of our emergency management plans and training and certifications are up to date throughout the whole region. If an emergency encroaches... If an emergency encroaches or involves more than one municipality, they would get involved to help in the coordination. The other thing it will do is provide redundancy in the event of a disaster. To note, for example, that if we have a big event that goes longer than, say, twenty-four hours, I know that McGrath has a trained communication officer and the county does. And that there's a director of social services that I can drop from if I need. There's another DEM that can spell me off when I need to go home and sleep and vice versa. So there is some committing of financial resources of this, and there's also some committing of human resources for this if we need to aid our other municipal partners. But for me, as the director of emergency management or the DEM, I very much would look forward to someone who's making sure that our annual trainings are coordinated and executed. That my emergency management plan is up to date and it is being, you know, the urban emergency management is satisfied with it. And so that's what we see with this position. So there's two documents here, one is the bylaw. And it did not escape the mayor's discerning eye for some grammatical pieces that we will fix here shortly. And the second is simply the agreement between the four communities. So we've, we've gone back and forth and I would, JD is much more up to speed on all this because he's been the one that's brokered the whole thing between all of us. But we've gone back and forth between forming a commission or just forming an agreement between the parties. And I've been pushing for this agreement between the parties because I'm trying to not get into the bureaucracy of a commission and all that goes with that. And this thing, this, this concept doesn't have, you know, massive financial implications that we need a commission to borrow for. We don't need something with natural person power necessarily. Is that a fair statement, JD, that we're, we're trying to avoid the commission by having an agreement between us? So, and also the obligation of council is, right now, we have two councillors who are appointed to the emergency management agency. So I meet with you on occasion as needed when we have councillor Barnes in the matter. One councillor and a backup would be appointed to the regional emergency management agency. Mayor, I'm having a hard time with this mask speaking too.
Could you stick it down?
I mean, I'll make it. If I pass out, I'm lying, but I think I'll be okay. So what, what we're talking about, all the municipalities are looking at this at the council level. Nobody's passing any readings at this point, I think that's fair to say. It was just, is there any major issues, anything we need to work out? We kind of want to know that all five communities are on side before anyone starts passing readings on a bylaw. Is really what we're getting, so we don't have someone with two readings on a bylaw and two people bail out.
So I appreciate the the getting rid of so many of those real things that happened the first time around that was so horribly difficult to read. But having said that, there's still some tweaking to do. For example, in our document, the town of Cardston, there is very often talking about a regional emergency management program and plan. Well, there is no definition in the definition section. And so I don't know if it's a plan, a program, what's the difference between a plan and a program, no clue. Because in the regional one, it doesn't talk about a program, it talks about a plan. So there is a few things like this that I have flagged that maybe you guys can go through, I'll give you those things and maybe you can have a look at those details. It's details, but once we fix them, I think we'll make the reading easier even more. There is one thing though, I there's one thing though I want to understand. On page four, when it talked about the article fourteen, oh, yeah, point fourteen. It talks about the bylaw delegate to municipal committee comprised of the mayor or any two two councillors. A committee of a mayor alone doesn't seem to make sense.
So it's simply, the theory there is, and I don't have any problem if we work through this, it's what do we need in order to declare a state of local emergency? What's the requirement?
Okay, so do we need to call it a committee?
No, so it's not a committee. Like, right now, I can declare a state of local emergency if I can get any, I think, two of you in a room.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to say. Maybe the municipal committee there, it's a little bit of a real thing. Comprised of the mayor, so that's the mayor, I'm the committee.
Oh, I see, they're calling that a committee, I see.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yep, thank you.
So this is something that maybe we'll need to kind of that one in particular, and there is other things, but I will bring you the points, there's no sense to discuss them. As far as the content, I think, is clear. There was one thing though that was not clear for me in the partnership agreement. On the director of emergency management, the minister person appointed by resolution of the municipal council of each of the party as chief administrative officers, CEO. So that's getting me confused. In our case, it is true that you are the CEO of the town and the DEM, but it's not true in all the other places.
It is.
Is, is that still true?
Correct.
So that is true?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I needed to assert.
In fact, if you look like the county and most of them, but in a couple of them, their councils insist that that's who it is.
Okay, all right, so that, that is good, so I'm, I'm comfortable with this.
I can't be an exception to that. I think it would be all, yeah, we all are, yeah.
And in the same page, under J, local authority means where municipality has a council within the mini of the municipal government act, come out, that council.
Those two words you can add.
I understand.
Yeah. We'll just take those last two words off because it just means we're a municipality as a council.
Yeah, that's what I saw. Anyway, I'll give you the rest of my little.
Good. So I guess I'm just asking, I don't want a resolution, but do you think this is an idea we should tell our partners we're willing to support? And we will have to bring some financial implication when we have no ready budget, but we expect it to be fairly minor between the five of us.
So they're saying you haven't, don't have an actual cost yet.
Have you done, what is your budget?
Seventy-five hundred dollars per council, that's all.
Five to seven is what we're looking at. I mean, the town and the county share the biggest portion.
Yeah. Council itself, council members.
So Jeff, my memory serves me correct, but the whole notion, I mean, this was that each one of you CAOs does this DEM thing on the side of your I should say DEA, DEA.
Yeah. It's interchangeable, it's fine.
It's on the side of your desk. So the notion was that when you have a regional emergency management coordinator, they can take care of all of this stuff that you guys really don't have the time for.
You're correct, and you're, you're exactly right. In twenty twenty, the requirements of the DEMs enhanced so much. So now we have to have annual training regionally. We have to be ICS three hundred, four hundred. We'll still have to do that, but someone can be coordinating all that training and I'll show up for it, absolutely, because I'm your DEM. So I'll be there and we'll be working on it, but someone else is putting the whole thing on and making sure it gets done.
So it seems like it's a positive investment that it's going to pay.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. And again, it gives us consistent redundancy in the region, which is really good because it's not the case now.
Yeah.
Like, we're the only ones in the region with a communication officer designated in an emergency where one, we're, I think, the only one with community social services where so this will get everybody up to speed so there's good redundancy on a regional level.
Okay, councillor Van Buren.
Jeff, is dealing with finances and council court basically asked a question? But will it be done by requisition?
No.
And is it, is it done by population or how is it?
Yeah, we divided by population, wasn't it?
We even specified if, yeah, we put
Yeah, that's right, that's right. We gave some scenarios of the bigger guys carrying a bigger load or by population. We got some options. They would not, this would not be a requisitioning body, they would not have, you know, order requisition. I don't want to put us in a whole bunch of those relationships.
Yeah.
But it would be obviously at the discretion of council each year to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeff, there's one more thing that I'm not so clear on. It's, it talks about different meetings.
What, what page do you want?
Well, page five, but let's hear what I'm saying. It talks about a secretary. And I'm thinking, are we going to kind of have that as a person rotating between the five parties?
That's the tentative agreement right now, is that we would take terms as assigning some of our administration staff to be a secretary, yes.
So that's, that's satisfying me. And the agenda, then, who will be doing the agendas?
Well, the regional DEM will be responsible to, to plan and coordinate all the meetings.
Okay, so you guys can feed if you have items, okay, fair enough.
Maybe I misread this, Jeff, but I thought that Phil's going to kind of take that lead.
They may have volunteered early.
They may have.
Yeah, Janet might have talked to Mark and said, we take that on. Yeah. So they may be our first one.
So I was not sure because it doesn't, it doesn't say specify how the secretary is being done in. So maybe there should be a little something referencing to that. Otherwise, we're okay. So what is it that you're looking for us, Jeff?
Just basically some nod, thumbs up or down or nods to say, formalize it, get it ready for a reading when we know all of the partners are ready to have a reading.
Okay. I am, I am in favor.
Okay. Oh, he's fifty over here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, okay, so that's good, thank you very much. And JD, remind me to leave you with this document. If you have questions, just let me know. Okay, let's go on to seven. The indoor recreation facility, the survey update. And then we have a question from councillor Barnes there, and maybe some other questions.
Yeah, I was just going to give an update that it started going out actually the end of last week. Everything should be out by this week. And we've already received about a hundred and some responses. And so it appears to be getting good uptake. It goes till March fifth. And we've done some in person, so people who, you know, either had a computer problem or they weren't comfortable doing it, they come in, we've, we've done it for them. So I just, that's all the update was, is it seems to be getting out there. I know there's still a few streets and avenues that don't have it, but we're, you know, we're, we got volunteers doing this for us and they're doing a new job.
Yeah, well, now, Street is, has not come in. Okay.
Just a quick question. I thought we discussed this before, that it was only going to ratepayers and taxpayers, but we're taking, are you taking some to the Chinook? And I wonder how we're doing that?
Yes.
Because they're not ratepayers, they're not taxpayers.
No, we said users, no matter what.
So how I took it, councillor, I'll be happy, well, I won't be happy because it's already out, cat's out of the bag, but how we took it was, we know we have a number of tenants. So we said in the, in the preamble, if your landlord wants to fill one out, we issue them another code. So they phone us, they say, hey, I own this property, I have tenants, they told me they got the survey great. What's your address? Yep, that's you, here's the code, go on and do it.
So you're telling me that people live in the ship that have property outside of that?
We've taken print copies to anyone that wishes to participate at the institutions.
And it's, it's fair. If you had a plebiscite, everybody has a right to do it. That was the whole idea of councillor Brown.
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
If everyone has a right to do it, if you're using the whole plebiscite, anyone who's eighteen of should also be able to speak, they'd be able to vote.
Yeah. It's, it's a complicated thing, this is what I keep on saying. It's not a perfect instrument by a long shot. But it's the best we collectively have decided to use to get a sense of what's the appetite in town for this work center. It's not perfect, but a long shot. But we also included the businesses which on a plebiscite we could not include. So it has pluses and minuses.
I was going to, I was going to say that I had a phone call from a resident of the Chinook Foundation who owns his home and he still, you know, paying the taxes, something stuff like that, he says, am I eligible for this? I said, absolutely. You know?
Can I have a problem with you on property in town? But I thought the understanding was that we would be going to the ratepayers, the twelve hundred and some whatever ratepayers, that are actually going to be funding this building and not to the seniors who probably aren't going to use it, they probably aren't going to fund us.
But I have an opinion.
But they may have, they may be the deciding factor if this thing is built or not, that bothers me a little bit.
It's not perfect, but we had discussed that at length at this table. And we made a decision. Councillor, who wanted to speak? Does somebody that wanted to speak, can you say?
Okay, well, I'm kind of, I'll see where councillor Ford's coming from then. I don't remember us having that conversation that we were going to include everyone and I, I appreciate where you're coming from, Mayor, that they have opinions, but like I said earlier, sort of all those who are eighteen and above who are still living in town, but don't own property and are rental tenants, they would have a strong opinion about this as well, so basically you're saying that this group's opinion is more valuable than this group's opinion?
No, and if you remember, collectively, we decided it was one survey per family. That's in its own way is already perfect. It's going to give us a sense. There is a lot of other things that need to come before we, we even make a decision. It's not a donation in town yet.
So I'm pretty internet savvy, so is my wife. We, we couldn't get this thing to go on our computers. I tried it on my computer and I could, it just led me to the town website. I went to the town website for the questions on the survey. I, I couldn't find it. I've had some phone calls and people, you know, they're concerned about, well, they can't get in. My wife phoned the town, left a message to have somebody call because we were going to do our thing and, you know, call in and tell them what our opinion was, or our answers to the she never got a phone call, she said, I don't know what's going on. She said, I called quite a long time ago, but nobody ever called back. So I don't, I don't know what happened there. But be that as it may, I look at some of the senior people that aren't techno and they're just frustrated with the whole thing. They may not call the town at all, I don't know. But I'm concerned about skewing, this whole thing being skewed. I just, I'm, I am, I am worried about that. I just find it's quite confusing for someone. It was confusing for me, who's okay with technology, what's it like with everybody else? And, you know, this, this is going to be difficult. I was really frustrated that there wasn't a paper document in there. Why did it all of a sudden become just a technology thing? That's what really bothered me. I'm not finished yet. I wanted that, those questions on paper in my envelope. Why did that not get done? Because that's what I thought we discussed. I'd like to know that. Anyway.
Okay. I appreciate your concerns. But there are maybe, if you don't mind me answering them. There may be a few solution to that problem. One is calling the town. If the town did not answer, that's, that's a problem. But I don't know such circumstances. There's also the ability for the people to get a paper survey.
I just don't see why we didn't do that in the first place. Why didn't go in the envelope for everybody? Those who wanted to do it online could do it and find it?
So I think it was more an administration issue to be able to collect them afterwards. It's easier to be able to do it online. Does that frustrate the older population? Then we need to make sure that we contact all the elderly that we know and help them. Councillor Brown?
So last, I totally respect where you're coming from and I understand it. Just to be clear. In our last council meeting, we were all given this sheet of paper, which showed exactly what every household in Cardston was getting. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
And so we were pre shown what every resident was getting. So should have we had a paper copy? Maybe, but we should have decided that before the survey.
I thought we had, I guess maybe that was mistaken.
Because this, this is what was handed to us, because I have it in my book. So we all saw ahead of time what was being handed out. So we saw this and as far as, as far as maybe since the mayor is fabulous about doing, you know, her onlineness, we enjoy those. Maybe we need a moment just so I can, you know, just so we can be crystal clear here, for her to say, you as town resident for her to say, "You, as town residents, have received this. If you are unable to go online and fill it out, please don't hesitate to call the town office as much as you want in order to get this done because it's important." I think, I think that would help with what you're saying, Counselor. And if that's what needs to happen, I thought it was kind of crystal clear in that because it actually says it. If you are not able to complete the survey online, please call the town office.
And which we did, and we didn't get it responded by.
Right, but our hope is, we're trying to do our due diligence. So our hope is, is that Jeff and his people will follow it up. I don't doubt that they will. Because I don't believe that Jeff's team is trying to skewer the results. We're trying to be open and honest with this as much as we can.
No, I'm not saying that. I didn't say that. I was saying that if not enough people get, and the frustrated people out there that don't get the survey done, it's going to skew the thing. That's my concern.
So maybe that's why, but that's my point. Maybe that's why then, we need the mayor to put out a little cute video, once again, stipulating that they can go online, and if they can't, please call the town office and don't give up. Would that make you feel better?
Yeah, it sure would.
Can I really do that?
I will add that I tried to go on my iPad and do it, and it wouldn't work on the iPad, so I had to put it on my regular computer. I had a little trouble once, and that's why I were using a computer.
Oh, so it doesn't work on the iPad? It's a problem?
I wouldn't say it's a consistent problem there, we're not hearing that.
We heard, Counselor.
We're not hearing this computer.
So it all depends on the technology you have?
It's nice to do like that, I don't know why it didn't work. Because it worked fine on here.
Well, we know it's not a perfect instrument, it's obvious.
Perfect.
All right.
I, I wanted to say something in defense of our mayor. As we discussed this thing between my wife and I, she said, "How much does your council rely on your mayor to answer every bit of mail with all the inaccuracies in it?" She says, "It's time that the council support the mayor in the fact that maybe the council needs to make a statement in general. Instead of the mayor writing every two days or every day, trying to counteract all of the miscommunications that are out there on Facebook and so forth. And Mayor, I apologize to you that you are responding, and you are being asked to respond as the mayor, and I know that's part of your duties and responsibilities. But it is part of your duties and responsibilities to have to write an article or do a little showpiece every, every two or three days. I think this council needs to take some responsibility in supporting you."
Well, I never felt that this council has not supported me regarding the work I have done.
Well, I think, I think there needs to be a single point of entry. And you're that entry point, that it comes from you, or it comes from Jeff, and it doesn't come from... Like, we can talk to people, but I think people need to hear the message from Mayor.
Right. And I try my best to give as fair information and accurate information as possible, representing our work on council. It's not always easy, and needs to be done.
I might be like lunch, maybe you're doing this, but is it possible before you put that out there that you come to the council so we can see it beforehand?
Counselor, Counselor, it has been a tradition for me to kind of do it from anything that has come here. Have you found any of my release inaccurate in the content?
No, I just...
Okay, well, if it's fine, if you haven't found any accuracy...
I would just like to have it ahead of us before the students all see it. So I have an idea of what they're seeing and what we're going to hear from them. I'm not criticizing you for doing it at all. I just do it before the whole town gets, I kind of get an idea of what's...
You know what? I wish I had read the article published in the Temple Star before I even wrote that article that I put out. And I'm grateful that I had not read it before I put my mind to read, to write that last release. Because a lack of truth, truthful comment, and exaggeration in that article, first page, probably you spent six hundred dollars to get it there, it's a shame. It's a shambles. I am not impressed with information that is being devolved to the town and that is filled with inaccuracy. If we want the rec center, we will get it. The people will tell us about it, and council, this one or the next one, will make it happen for them. But if the rhetoric carries on the way it is, it's going to improve.
I would suggest that's coming from both sides. I agree with you, it's getting a little bit out of control.
It's totally out of control. And this council is going to have to make a decision sooner than later about their appetite to center in principle to re-give the green light.
And that's the reason why I had the survey.
And if, yeah, but that's not enough, Counselor. You need donations, they're not there yet. That's not enough, Counselor. And if you were to pull this council right now, you might be disappointed.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Please, go ahead.
I'm just trying to carry a current, I don't want to get into an argument, so...
I never want an argument either.
But how, how can we, how can we suggest these potential donors that, yeah, we need your money, when we, we're not even willing to say we're going to give you a billion dollars to start with? And keep throwing it back into the principal, and all of a sudden, the survey's not going to be enough? What is it going to be enough to make you tell those guys?
It's not binding, Counselor.
Can I finish?
Please.
What are we going to tell those guys? It's not, we've decided this was going to happen, now tell us what you've got donations. If we keep putting it off and putting it off, it's frustrating, because they've got guys sitting out there wondering what's going on in town. Is the town actually going to approve later? They just throw it out there in principle. As soon as we can tell them, yes, it's there or not there, they can do their thing.
Well...
That's what's frustrating me.
Counselor, so? Yeah, maybe we need to forget about this item.
After March 5th, we'll have a line of inquiry. So we can say all of this discussion after March 5th. How about you move on to seven?
I think it's an extremely wise move, Counselor.
Mayor, can I just say this?
But I think there are other people around the table that like to talk also. Go ahead.
But that's why I think it is important that the information comes from the mayor. Because as I was told from my first day on council, there's a line of authority. And if fourteen of us are giving fourteen different interviews, and we're all speaking a different language, then the community that we, that put us in here isn't going to get true facts. Whereas if we have one person representing us, and we're speaking the same language, to me, that's the line of authority which it should come from. And I think it, I, I, am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong, Counselor. That's what we had decided from day one. And honestly, regardless of my personal position, I will try to be as fair as what is happening around the table when I do my release. And I try to do it in a very objective manner. And I don't really think anybody can ever fault me for doing that. And I don't need to apologize for those release that are done in fairness, to put the facts straight. That's all what I have to say.
Please don't misunderstand me. All I wanted to do was see it before everybody else saw it, so I could see what's going out there. That's all. I don't know, I have no problems with your release, I just wanted to see what the mayor...
Could I suggest something, Mayor?
Go ahead.
It's certainly...
Possible.
Well, we can just send out a direct link call of council. So if Shem renders the video and does all that, and then we can post it on the site, and before it's really public, we can just send a link out to everybody. It may still go out when we go home that night, but you're probably going to be one of the first to see it. Give you a little sneak preview of it or something. Or if we did it Thursdays, then you would have all of that to see it, and then Friday at the end of the day, we could put it public. And those kind of things would be very easy to manage, I think.
And we could nominate the mayor for an Emmy Award.
So...
Counselor, you can pass on Mr. Onseng, you're not even...
Mayor, I just want to mention too, with the survey, I feel bad that it's become complicated. You just go type in cartston.ch/survey. That's it. And you do the survey.
That's all I did in it. That's all I did in the site.
So the other things, we have had a couple people that have come in. We've helped them right there. If you want a paper copy, you get a paper copy, if that's what you prefer. So we, I move forward. We, as an organization, move forward based on the resolution of council that I interpreted as pretty clear two weeks ago how we're going to move forward. And so that's what we did. But by all means, and Counselor Barnes, it's pretty rare that somebody doesn't pick up the phone during office hours here. It overflows to everybody in the office, so that's all. But by all means, give us a call, and we'll walk anybody through it, for sure. And we have done some. We've had some folks come down to the office, and we've taken them through it right there on the spot. They bring their little coat down, and we take them right through. So we'll continue to do that through the duration, for sure.
All right, did I scroll to seven B?
It's easy on this, I just put it on iPad.
Right.
So if, if the story with the iPad is a problem, maybe we'll need to mention it.
I don't know why, because like I said, as soon as it went on there, you can't...
But Counselor, we had the same problem with another issue in December. I remember you and I had the conversation. Seven B, policing priorities. Jeff, at this time, have you received the priorities that we had...
It's in, it's in the package, is it?
Okay, so I may have missed that, maybe my status is printed before. Mine only says that it was requested, but I don't have it.
Everyone else has it.
It's the one that says Jeff.
Yeah.
That was the email from Sergeant Wright.
So maybe you'll be able to give them.
Sure.
Do you want, do you want to kind of go through them?
So the focus of the RCMP were crime reduction, and their clearance of thefts and other things is on the list, and enhancing public confidence and engagement. And so Sergeant Wright, what we were talking, him and I, was if you as a council have some areas that are missed, that are underserved, any of those kind of things, what we'll probably do about next week or just after that is call a policing committee meeting so that you councillors on that committee can, can meet with him face to face and talk about it. If there's some perceived deficiencies or areas that aren't being addressed. So if you wanted to skin it as a collective, so that your councillors, Counselor Drew, Angry Mayor...
Yeah, that's right.
Can meet with Sergeant and talk that through, that's the intent of tonight.
Please go ahead.
Under one, you have one A I, number four. Can I find out what a lucid program is?
One, two, you know, lock it or lose it. Lock it or lucid. In my defense, it was a copy paste, so... But fair question, Counselor.
And with two D foot patrols, wouldn't you like to put a number on there?
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can see.
So that is an interesting point, Counselor, because I was saying at time, I don't remember whether to talk about that, or maybe when we were doing the interview, asking about that. And I think what the answer was, that they might have a foot patrol scheduled for a day. And when I get, all of a sudden, I get a phone call, I'd send them to Glenwood, or send them to Hillspring, and then go to foot patrol. And so that is a little bit of what becomes a priority at that moment. So that's, that's a problem. I, I don't exactly know how we fix that.
I thought last year, they, they had foot patrol down, but they had a number.
Yes, they had a number.
So they might just need to have them.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, that one that you brought.
All that's going on.
I, I could be wrong a bit, I'll see. Okay. Now, a follow-up from the Brownlee Conference. First of all, I don't know how many of you had the chance to view it. I thought it was really an excellent conference. It was, there was only one, one session, the second session that I found pretty one. But otherwise, I think they were very much interesting and important for us, as Counselors.
In my opinion, it was the best Brownlee that I've attended, and I've been to seven. And the only session I didn't like is the one, the last one before the mayor foot, very bad. It was boring.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, that was my opinion.
Well, that was one, that was very brutal.
The watershed one, yeah.
That one was terribly brutal, but anyways, whatever. So on our poll, I really think they, they are looking for feedback. If you have a chance, take a minute to give them feedback on their conference. I think it's worthwhile for them to know that that format works, it worked well.
All right, question?
Go ahead.
So now we've had the Brownlee, we've got an AUMA one's coming up. Jeff, what's that?
Well, the budget review is on Friday. I think it's in your package here. I think, yeah, from Dan, and I emailed you the link as well. So if you want to go through their budget summaries, that's on Friday morning, I believe? I need to look at that.
I think it's afternoon.
Oh, thanks.
Two to three, three or something like that?
And those are normally very good. They give you a great synopsis of the whole budget, which is a pretty bright opportunity. But it, it normally highlight what's important for municipalities and the impact on the taxation. So I think it's, it's really good. Because this year, I'm talking about different things that may be a little bit worrisome for us all if they're really intending to claw back some MSI. Anyways, let's not worry about it until it happens.
Are we discussing anything to do with the policing?
Increase of salaries?
Or, or, well, the transition that Minister Casey Madu is basically pushing through as far as I'm concerned.
You're telling me the insurance is forced?
Yes.
I, I can speak to that. MLI Scout's coming next week to speak to that with council.
Excellent.
Yeah, we said that.
Yeah.
As I, as I watched through that, that report, it, it's scary. And that's the only thing to say about it.
Okay, so to, to give you a little bit of a quick update of the RCMP and this, that whole policing conference, there was one survey that was rather interesting. They wanted to know what was the appetite of communities that were... There were seven hundred and sixty-five people in that session. They wanted to know what was the appetite of communities for transitioning towards a regular police or keeping the RCMP. It was absolutely staggering. More than eighty percent wanted to remain with the RCMP, even if they were less than perfect.
Eighty-nine percent.
Okay.
And seventy percent opposed replacing.
Right. Okay, so that was an interesting take because the, the RCMP conducted a survey among municipalities very thorough, throughout the whole province, and I have a detail of it. And what the problem was, is that the government, in their, in their try, report that is going to be presented, I don't remember the agencies that's doing it.
Price Waterhouse.
Okay, Price Waterhouse. Only really took information from towns that were around Edmonton and their big centers. And so there was what municipality felt... And so, there was what municipality felt had not been proper consultation always through. So, that's an issue. Anyways, let's move on. The business arising from delegation, okay. The West Wind School Division, I think the best take we got today was that there will be a strategic planning session that will be before all the council's strategic session, and will maybe help us to understand over the next three to five years what's coming up in that month. And I am glad Counselor Cook for the question, because yes, it's time to see improvement in the lines part and all that thing. So, thank you for that question. Any other comment? No? Regarding Mr. John Schaefer.
I think we leave that to the closed session.
Yeah, we need to keep it for later on. Committee reports, so there is a C O report, there is some interesting things in that C O report. Thank you for putting all that there. Under the parks, you will see that there is a comment about the dog park and Alberta health concerns. So, Jeff is trying to get the H S to an upcoming meeting, or possibly a C C W, to try to understand the concerns and how we can mitigate. Yes.
Question, Jeff, on your public works, you started out with the sewer plant is deteriorating. Can you update us on the path? What kind of money will we look at?
Well, we've just been repairing, so Curtis just told me that, so what happens up there is we have two banks of R B Cs rotating by law.
Yeah, sure.
We generally run off one, so we can take the other one out of service, we can repair it, we can do that, and that's good. What's happening is we've got R B Cs on both sides that have got some big problems, and so we're needing to run both sides of kind of lower capacity, so that we have enough contact with the R B Cs. So, Curtis said we're working through it, and that's fine. He just wants to know that there's a path forward. So, as I mentioned in my report, we had a quote from Saffar, which, good company, everything's good. We are, I am giving a second opinion, we'll call it, on potentially design building. There's a very turnkey, very, very good solution. I'm not debating that for a minute, and it may be the direction we need to go. But I should know by the end of the week what some alternative options are for the design man. I expect to know that Thursday or Friday.
Can you give us a little bit of a rundown of what's happening with the sewer backup on second?
Yeah, I put in the 600 block on there, it's actually the 700 block, but we had a resident who had a backup, we went and inspected, and the main has been infiltrated by roots. The challenge is right now, there's a couple of challenges. One is, you can usually go in and cut those roots out and it buys you some time, you know, quite a lot. But Brandon was pretty hesitant to do that, because it's a clay tile sewer line, and if we break that line, it's underneath like 12 feet of frozen ground. This isn't the best time of year to dig on sewer line. We just got through a massive cold spell. And so, what we're doing is, our guys are going to go up every two weeks and flush it, and try and make sure things are flowing in there, and they'll keep a good eye on the manhole, and then this spring, we're going to have to look. As you know, we've gone up Second Avenue, we stopped at the 700 block, and this is the next block. So, we're going to need to tweak our capital priorities when we come back from mill rate time. We'll look at tweaking some of that stuff, because we're going to need, Brandon hasn't given me the indication whether we need to do the whole block, or whether we can do a couple of lengths. That block has an elevation, it's kind of at the hump. And so, it's actually just on one side of that where it flows the other way that the bigger issue is, and so potentially, we can do a portion or something, so.
Counselor, thank you.
So, Jeff, that's bottom line that we can push through, right?
Well, the issue with the councillors, even if you push through, all your connections have to be made, and so you've got to dig it up to make all your connections.
Okay.
Otherwise, they're just pushing into a line there, so.
And how about our Main Street sewer? You got probably no Main Street.
I'm not aware of anything. Our bigger concern there over the next few years is the water line on Main Street. Brandon's been working on, Frankie talked to me about it a couple days ago, he's trying to see what it would look like if we actually just abandoned the water line in Main Street, and we put it in behind in the lanes. The problem is every connection goes up front. But then it begs the question is, how do you get the connection out the back without a total wreck? And so, he's working through that, but the other challenge in our community is that back lane, particularly on the west side of Main Street, has everything in it. Telus, fiber, gas, you name it, it's all in the lane. So, it's not a fun one to dig in. It's incredibly slow. So, but no, we had some sewer issues on Main a few years ago, Counselor, and we epoxy lined the line.
Exactly.
That seems, as far as I know, we're doing well. No problem there. But yeah, I did have a resident phone who's experiencing backup, and I just wanted to make you aware if you got calls too. But I think we've worked with them, we're going to help them out with their, some of those costs and take care of that.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So, Jeff, with this sewer plant and the sewer lines are like that, are you going to have those figures for us before we start setting in our budget review?
Yeah. Like I said, there should be no option two for the sewer plants.
Well, you as an administration know where you're going.
I hope so. I hope you think that.
Well, what I'm saying, the council gives you a directive that, hey, we've done our assessment and our tax review, so that you owe what kind of money do you have?
Yeah, it may be a shifting of priorities, like it has to be sometimes, but we'll bring that. Like I said, I don't know how extensive we have to go on Second Avenue West. We do need to address Second Avenue East, we kicked that, canned down the road actually a couple of years. And that's what we have this year for sewer and water replacement. Actually, maybe a sewer. But either way, we do need to address that, but Brandon's going to figure out what we can do and see if we can get one out.
My only concern is, and you've done a wonderful job, you and your departments, but we keep putting off, you know, and saying we'll do it, putting ahead, putting ahead. And I think there comes a time when we need to say, hey, you know, here's your money, let's do it.
Well, Counselor, at the end of the day, it's probably not reasonable that if I showed up and said we want to replace every line older than 1970, that any of us are ever going to conjure the finances to make that happen. But, so we pick away a little, and we try to find a balance. It's not a perfect system.
No.
A lot of it is based on calls, just like we got this week, that, hey, there's something wrong with this main, and sure enough, there is. That now becomes a priority, right? Because it isn't also reasonable that we're inspecting every line constantly to know its real-time condition. And so, it really is a balancing act, Counselor, and we'll bring you back a proposal on how to manage that. I hope you.
And Jeff, I want to congratulate you on being selected with Municipal Affairs regarding the internship program, so.
Oh, no, it's not a new one.
Okay.
I didn't apply this year for new internship. They asked me to participate on a committee to look at the future of the program, so there were six of us.
Well, thank you, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so far, and I say it with J D in the room, it's been a pretty good program for us over time, so. It was great to be asked to talk about the future of the program.
But don't be too humble about that one. Take kudos when you deserve.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You win some, you lose some.
All right. There are multitude, there are, well, there's not a multitude, there is a certain amount of reports there. And is there anything that you really would like to discuss? I saw, Counselor Barnes, that you asked a question, why is the surplus redistributed to the municipality? And obviously, it was absolutely not.
What was it?
It was a surplus that was in the library.
Yeah.
And it was divided 1,700 to each library.
Fifteen hundred.
And the rest was put in reserve or 1,500, whatever. So, I thought, well, we struck a balance, that was nice. Any other things that you want to talk about? No? Okay. If not, it's those for your information. There's a lot of correspondence. There is a letter from Mr. Austin, and that one is worth kind of looking at, because he has some interesting questions. And I don't really know, what do we do with such correspondence, so.
Mr. Austin's put that out on social media, so a lot of people have seen this.
And was it on social media?
Yeah, I don't think people have seen this on social.
Same thing.
Not as exact, but as accurate.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks.
We are going. What did you say?
Okay.
I just answered the question, was it?
Okay, very well. So, but those are important questions, no doubt. I'm sure that a lot of people have those kind of questions.
One of the concerns I have with the question, what would be the exact dollar amount of how much my taxes could increase? Well, we don't have a clue.
Well, that's exactly, well, that's exactly what you need to explain, that we don't have the operational cost figured out yet, and if we don't have them figured out, it's extremely difficult to put a dollar figure.
Yeah.
And the mill rate is not set, and there's a lot of things that's not set, so we do not know. Okay, any, so you could see from A U M A from Down Road, the invitation to look at the provincial budget review tomorrow is the budget, the day after is the review. And there is an update from Tanya Ton on A U M A, she always does such a great job. And she's part of the policing committee that's looking at the transition. So, that's for your information also. What was talked about at that policing committee kind of session, that the RCMP are looking at renegotiation of salary right now, and that they're in term of professional policing at the bottom of a pile, and they're looking for five and six percent increase, which mean that our requisition will change. So, beyond and above what we have, five and six percent we grew up. So, they told us be ready for it, because as was a correct note.
Mayor, along with a very big point of it, they not let any debt to be 5,100. You know, they gave us the concrete notes.
I mentioned that, and I sent a text to the, I think you had a presentation that needed a little bit of an upgrade. As for the other, the other correspondence, is there anything there that struck you as important? Counselor Randy Bullock sent a couple letters that were quite good.
The letter from the Crosses Pass tweet my interest. The government was going to throw the coal mine in, and they yanked it out, and this is a very good letter from the Crosses Council explaining exactly what this grassy amount of coal mine would be. And by just turning it back on, it's probably cost this area several hundred jobs if we don't go ahead. It's not what the tree hunter is saying it's going to be. So, I think we, in my mind, we need to support this mayor.
Well, you know something that Mayor, in a discussion that came about, the Crosses Pass, his particular project, mining project, is not the one that is interviewed. So.
But his concern, if I understand, is that, and he talks about this fencing guy trying to block it or whatever it is, is that they're lumping all this different kind of coals into one category.
Okay, so at the Mayor's and Reeve discussion, it was a Zoom, and those two mayors had interaction, and a fellow from Edison made it very clear that he was not after the project of Mayor.
Sorry, he wasn't, sorry.
He was not trying to block that project. He was not trying to, and he did it publicly. So, I would imagine that is as good as it's come, because so soon meeting, there's a lot, a lot of government people, there's a lot of M R As, there's some M Ps, and there are mayors from all over South of Alberta.
His last line is, we ask that you and your council please block the French government. Are we prepared to do that? We have, I don't know how many we have in town that work in the coal mines in Carson, we probably have 10 or 12 people that commute up to the mines at Elkford. This, to me, is a very unique opportunity for our town. They're another hour closer to home, for one thing, and they are good-paying jobs.
So.
It's poking coals, not the other burning kind.
All right, so what's your opinion around this council table?
I think we should support it. Can we chat with Joseph Scott when it comes up?
Okay, well, we can do that, and from there on decide.
I like the idea.
Would you be okay with that?
The coal mine, yeah.
Okay. Are we okay with that? All right. Thank you very much. And I think that's the end of that, of that meeting. The only thing is about the old man air river regulation, a regional service commission, I don't know who is the rep. Okay, there is something there that is interesting and worth looking at, is that they have half-time balances of budget this year. And so, what I have kind of agreed upon is that if there were a shortage of money, they will always ask for more from the different municipality mid-year. And I think that's interesting, but it's a little rough. You have to have the time what's coming, you know? I mean, it's nice to ask for more, but it's a little bit rough, and we have no clue what to put in your budget. Anyways, this may be worth looking at at another time, and maybe as, maybe Jeff, couldn't it be possible for administration to kind of contact also a little bit regarding what they intend, what exactly are they thinking? I mean, it's nice to ask for more money, but.
I'm glad.
Counselor? Yeah, is that okay?
I'm glad.
Yeah, okay. All right.
We skipped the letter with the County Carson County. Will you discuss that a little bit?
Sure.
When they're talking about your special regional approach of COVID-19 restrictions in Alberta, they've made some very good points. The government treats the whole province as one, when it's really not one. I mean, County Warner has three cases, Forty Mile has no cases, and their concern, and our county, this is our county, they're concerned with the lack of opening the businesses, et cetera, and we'd like to see them look at it on a more regional basis, rather than just everybody locked down. I think we should support our county guys on that.
Counselor, do you remember that last time we asked for a letter to be sent to the government regarding that whole notion? We sent one letter. Can we maybe carry on with that also with Joseph Scott at that point when he comes? Would that be, we sent a letter.
Okay, and they're just asking for our support.
Yeah, but that's what you did, we sent a letter. So, that letter is also in response to another letter we've had previously, the former meeting we had.
You referenced, how long ago was this?
Two weeks ago.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right. Your approach.
Yeah, with that, exactly. We asked for some.
So, we wrote a letter, Counselor.
All right, thank you. Counselor, I'll, Joe will address that as well.
Yeah, I think it's okay to add it on. All right, so I think at this point, we're done with this meeting.
We should do a motion to extend the mayor, just because it's around eight o'clock. And then a motion to hold session.
All right.
What time we need?
Uh, it's maybe nine o'clock, so we don't have to do it again. Make a motion to extend.
Thank you, all right, Peter. Thank you very much.
Well, with every effort we can for that.